For pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the
United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It will bring Ms. Jackson is going to lead us in prayer today. Following the prayer, we're going to have a moment of silence in remembrance of Sister Jean Orsudo, former Children's Services Board member. She was a longtime children's advocate and community icon here in Trumbull County that we lost recently. Ms. Jackson.
Father God, we just want to thank you for another opportunity to praise who you are, not who we are, but who you are. We thank you for your son, Jesus. We thank the Holy Spirit. We thank all of you for being present as an end dwelling in each and every one of us that are present today and also always being present as it is written when we pray. So Father God, government is one of the seven mountains. So we intercede for the government operation here in Trumbull County and Warren City, Father God. We thank you in the name of Jesus for those who the people have elected to serve them, oh God, because your son, Jesus, was a servant of all. So Father God, as we go forward in this meeting today, let things be done decent and in order. And as is done decent and in order, Lord God, let there not be chaos, let there not be opposition, let there not be disorganization. Because you're a God of order. We ask all these things in the name of Jesus. In Jesus' name, we have prayed, amen and amen.
A moment of silence, please, for Sister Jean. Thank you. Here, our next public workshop will be Tuesday, April 23rd at 10:30 a.m.
Tim, could you please?
And the next regular meeting will be Wednesday, April 24th at 10:30 a.m.
Okay, sorry, point of first of all, would you, can you, Tim, can you please at least log me on with the internet wifi? No, it's, it's my, it's my computer. I'll bring it to you then. This is, this is going to be a problem.
She needs her login password or whatever. She can't log into her email.
I have to ask permission from the board for you to.
No, but maybe not address during the need. Dude, you're on.
Is automatic, the way you set it up last time is so that it will automatic?
I'm looking at it right now.
Okay, because I don't have the password, okay.
Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco. Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated April 9th, 2024, and the regular meeting dated April 10th, 2024, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes, or no, I'm sorry, no on the meeting minutes.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
A motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number three is to transfer monies.
A motion to transfer monies is listed.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number four is to approve transfer of appropriations.
A motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number five is to approve additional appropriations.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number six is to decrease appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seven is to adopt a resolution approving the list provided labeled as then and now commissioners dash March 2024 of purchase orders to the various vendors as then and now purchase orders in compliance with O R C 5705 point 41D.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eight is to concur with the Trumbull County engineer to grant the special hauling permits to haul steel coils requested by the company listed. And the company is J. Row Transportation Services, Inc.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number nine is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permit requested by the company listed. And that company is Trumbull Cement Products Company, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 10 is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permit requested by the company listed. And that's CNS Networks.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 11 is to concur with the county engineer authorizing Kinsman Township to establish legal weight limits on the township roads as listed. And that's Township Highway 267A and B at 10 ton and Township Highway 267C and D at 5 ton.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 12 is to award the lowest responsive and responsible bid as submitted by Shelley and Sands, Inc. For the Everett Hall Road, Warren Meadville Road, Brookfield Avenue, Jurs Colebrook Road Improvements Project Part One, T R U, First 2024 Countywide Road Improvements and the Trumbull County Local 2024 Road Improvements Program, Part Two, T R U, First 2024 Countywide Road Improvements in the amount of $1,356,655.50 and to enter into a contract with Shelley and Sands, Inc. for said project.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 13 is to adopt a resolution proclaiming April 14th, 2024 through April 20th, 2024 as National Public Safety Telecommunication Week in Trumbull County, Ohio, in conjunction with the Association of Public Safety Communication Officers, the National Emergency Number Association, and the Congress of the United States. The Board of Trumbull County Commissioners wishes to honor and thank all telecommunications of Trumbull County who perform a critical and crucial job during emergency situations to protect and preserve the lives and property of Trumbull, Trumbull County residents.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 14 is to authorize the Trumbull County 911 Dispatch Center Director, Tacey McDonough, to purchase an annual license with Criticall online in the amount of $6,278 and to enter into an agreement with Criticall online. The agreement will be effective for the term commencing May 1st, 2024 through May 1st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 15 is to award the lowest and best proposals submitted by Sotoli Carpet and Floor Covering for all labor and materials necessary for the installation of new carpeting on the first floor of the Trumbull County Family Court, including the removal of existing carpeting and required moving and reset of furnishings as required for this project in the total amount of $11,786.89.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Question. It looked like these were being addressed to Mr. Baumback, but was someone from maintenance associated with it?
Yeah, maintenance partner was a part of it, yes.
There were problems with that particular.
You had a problem with that particular person. They rectified the problem that was done. We've given them other jobs since then. I have no problem with Sotoli carpeting.
They sent one person to install this entire room, made a mistake with the seam, it had to be redone. If we weren't here watching, it wouldn't have, and it's still slightly imperfect where it was installed. I just think it's a, if it's only a cup, a matter of a couple hundred dollars, I think it's better, you know, for $200 or $300 more to go with someone who doesn't have the history of making mistakes and installing or actually sends two installers for big jobs, you know?
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
The past performance, no, but I know that he runs to your campaign manager, so.
What's that have to do with the pristine China?
That could be why.
Item number 16 is to award the lowest and best bid responsive response to Utility Contracting, Inc. for the Almonds Wastewater Treatment Plant Replacement Project known as County Project Number 9 dash S dash 20 in the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District Metropolitan Subdistrict in the amount of $807,487 and to enter into a contract for said project.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
When this came over in the system, it said that it did not need a prosecutor's opinion and it says that it's subject to the approval, but I would just want to make sure that it was approved. It's to form process and correctness as it relates to procurement as well. Did anyone at all even look at it so far?
Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. These contract documents were reviewed by the prosecutor's office before they were sent out to bid.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No, because we still haven't, it still hasn't been proven that it was correct as far as the process goes, and we've had problems with the procurement and the ranking. And I'd just like to make sure that we're compliant with that.
The prosecutor was in our public workshop yesterday that you were not at, and he was in there when we went over this and had no objections to it.
Yeah, okay. I heard the entire meeting, no one asked them if it complied with our procurement, procurement as it relates to ranking bids, and that's been a problem in the past, so. We weren't asked, but.
I'm the person who reviewed the contract. So I was coming to give you some information.
Review it?
Yes.
After, after it's come back?
No. So I reviewed this contract before it went to bid.
Right, so my question is, we have procurement process that we, where we rank and grade the, those who are bidding, and I wondered if we followed that process? If we did everything compliant with, if it's been approved to form process? Obviously process, so, you know, up to the point of putting it out to bid. But with the award of the bid, I just wanted to find out.
Unless there's an actual question about it, that's not something we typically review. We do the contract before and the review of the contract as to form after it's been awarded. But that's not.
It just makes better sense to me to vote on something after I know it's been approved as to form, and that's kind of been something I've been trying to accomplish since I've been here rather than voting on it and then potentially being mistaken where it needs, that's happened to us on several occasions. So it's just my preference to make sure it's approved before we vote on it. Thank you, though, appreciate it.
With our staffing levels, that's not something that's even, you know, possible.
I mean, we could set a meeting up with Mr. Watkins and you could tell him how to be prosecutor and do his job if you would like, but I don't think that's necessary.
So, I mean, we followed typical procedure with this and we weren't asked any additional questions, so.
It's, it's something that the Board of Commissioners should take a little more effort to make sure that, that we're doing correctly so that we don't have to rebid as we have done in the past and, or have people come and complain because of a possible problem with the procurement where we, we, there's a cause of action against us. It's just better to do that beforehand, and we don't have an administrator or any staff that that does that, and when I look at things, I usually, you don't agree until after the fact if we have to throw it out and rebid it, so. But it'll be no for me just because I, I have nothing showing that it was done in compliance.
Item number 17 is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act funds, and this is for Kinsman Township Green Space. And commissioners on the next page, this is a one-time grant to Kinsman Township in the amount of $159,460 to be used for the installation of new sidewalks in the township green space.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.
Item number 18 is to enter into an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and Kinsman Township as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel to provide funds for the township for the installation of new sidewalks in the township green space as described in Exhibit A, and the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allow, allocates the sum of $159,460 to the township.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.
Like to congratulate Kinsman Township on putting together a good grant and a good request. We have all three of our township trustees here from Kinsman. Oh, we have two of, two of them, Mr. Thompson. He's kind of the, the, kind of the honorary mayor of Kinsman. But we have a representation from Kinsman, and we have a big dummy check we'd like to present to you, and thank you for your efforts up there. Doesn't get much farther from downtown Warren than Kinsman does, and it's glad that that we can work together on projects for the benefit of Trumbull County and all its citizens. And you'll put this money to use wisely, and we look forward to encouraging our residents to see what Kinsman has to offer. We've come a long way in the last couple of years, and there are some sites and some places, including the Peter Allen Inn and including the, the market that, and some historical sites there that I encourage all Trumbull County residents to take a Sunday drive someday up to Kinsman and see what they have. And we're going to present the check to you.
As I know, I talked to the, the people from the community to make sure that the project would be eligible. You know, a lot of the townships were putting in applications that weren't questionable, of questionable eligibility. And having read the Treasury guidance and noting, knowing which ones would, would actually go through without concern, I'm glad that you guys put in something that could have been quickly approved and processed as fast as it was, so.
Just want to come up. Front of the thing, so it's. Dave, we can forward a copy of that over to us? Pledge allegiance. Yeah.
Item number 19 is to approve or deny the bridge name changes of two Weathersfield Township bridges, number 15 and number 21. The bridges will be renamed the Disabled American Veterans Bridge in honor of service members and with disabilities who have faithfully served our country and the Weathersfield Township First Responders and Veterans Bridge to honor Weathersfield Township's dedicated safety forces and selfless veterans.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 20 is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to execute the mutual aid agreement between Mahoning County Board of Commissioners, Mahoning County Juvenile Justice Court, Trumbull County Board of Commissioners, and the Trumbull County Family Court. O R C 5502 point 29 authorizes the parties to enter into a mutual aid agreement for the purpose of responding to and recovering from a, from a disaster or emergency which requires additional resources.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.
Item number 21 is to execute a letter of support to Mr. Rick Stockburger, President and CEO of Bright Energy Innovators for the proposal to the Appalachian Regional Commission for Building a Bright Warren and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute said letters on behalf of the board.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 22 is to execute a letter of support to Ms. Barb Ewing, Chief Executive Officer, Youngstown Business Incubator to advanced manufacturing expansion in Trumbull County, Ohio, and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute said letters on behalf of the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 23 is to adopt a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Trumbull County, Ohio, entering upon its journal the filing of a petition for annexation seeking to annex land situated in Howland Township to the city of Warren, Ohio, parcel three and known as being lot numbers 25, 26, 65, and 66 in the Crystal Springs Park allotment, which plat is recorded in volume 12, page 64 and 65 of the plat records of Trumbull County, Ohio, and referenced as parcel numbers 28 dash 486874, 28 dash 486875, 28 dash 486876, and 28 dash 486877, and to refer the legal description of the perimeter and the map or plat of the territory proposed to be annexed to the Trumbull County Engineer for Review.
Point of clarification on this. This was just added to the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I, I searched under annexation to see if I could find where it came over. Where would I find the information about this? Because it didn't appear to.
This was brought in at the end of the workshop. So it was brought in by the, by the attorney.
Can I have a copy of it?
Yes, I have a copy of it, but this, this has to go on according to O R C, no matter what.
Even still?
Well, you will get it. You were, I was planning on giving it, but it has to go on no matter what.
Right, and it should come to the commissioners who are voting on things in advance of their meetings. I'm sorry for being that meticulous to like to see what I'm voting on.
Make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
I'll abstain because I just haven't had a chance to read it and.
Okay. All, all we voted on is accepting it, accepting the filing of it, that's all.
Checking the numbers and things to make sure everything's correct, I think is a, is a wise practice before we just represent things, but.
It was checked.
Okay. Not by the commissioners.
By Attorney Dan, so.
By the prosecutor's office.
Now, the engineer will review it now, and then when the engineer reviews it, we'll have more.
With the procedure, it'll be uploaded and it'll say whether or not the prosecutor approved it or not. And having not had an email relative to this, there is nothing that says that the prosecutor's reviewed it, so. You're me for my due diligence.
Two commissioners were here yesterday and actually saw it being delivered.
It doesn't matter, right? It doesn't matter.
If you were here, you would have seen it and been able to look at it.
Listen to the entire.
After the meeting.
No, during. If they came afterwards, either way, the process is that.
Let's just move on.
Right.
Okay, that concludes our regular agenda business for April 17th. At this time, we'll open up for anyone that has any business for the good of Trumbull County. Anyone from the board?
Um, there's a. I think that I have, um. Someone who called, contacted me. I guess there's a friend of yours in jail.
In jail, nope. Not true. It's internet, internet stuff that you're playing. Who called? If you have a call, document that who calls, turn it in, we'll review it, bring it up at the next board meeting. It's all false of what you're talking about. We're trying to slander. Did not, I did a tour, a jail tour, official one with the administrators of the jail. Um, last month, I talked about it in the meeting. I talked about in the public workshop, everything that we went over when we were there. It's the only time I've ever been there in my life.
Didn't visit the logging.
I was there on a tour, official, my official tour of the jail. I saw him and I saw about eight other people that were there that I saw in the newspaper. I did not, not at any time. I did not. Did not talk to the doctors, did not anything that, uh, this bogus rumor going around rumor mill that you're trying to drum up.
It was in the afternoon?
It's all documented. It's only camera. It's all there. Talked to the jail administrators. They'll tell you. It was an official tour of every room in the jail, every department, every floor. As commissioner, I've never done that yet, and I got to see it. I got to see the floor. I got to see the lighting for issues they have there, and I, I talked about all of it. Yep. Uh, loosely you say that, okay. Anybody have anything else for the good of Trumbull County? Yes, sir. David Thomas, Asherfield County Auditor and State Representative, soon to be State Representative-elect, I guess, you know, I'm an opponent for the fall, correct?
Yeah, so just here to say hello, introduce myself, traveling around to all the different local government entities that I can, just to kind of say hello and start a relationship and conversation. So currently counting. Uh, so currently county auditor for Asherfield County, uh, just won the, the primary here last month for state rep. So it's the new sixty-fifth district, which covers about four fifths of Asherfield County, and then the northern tier of Trumbull and the eastern half of Trumbull County. Um, so happy to, to work on anything, discuss anything, um, been sharing business cards, cell phone number, uh, just to get the ball rolling. Will take office in January as state rep, uh, for that area and also that part of Trumbull. But just here to say hello, introduce myself, um, uh, here in a meeting and, um, happy to, to start our working relationship, uh, now, but won't actually take office until, until January.
Well, we wish you the best of luck, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Yeah, likewise, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Comment to the, just for the benefit of the board, the, um, meeting, yeah, there was a meeting yesterday about the Colberg Dam. Um, and it, it sounded like they're going to consider waiting. I don't know if they will, they, it sounds like at first they were ready to just completely. Their, uh, project.
Okay.
For moving the dam, but trustee there, Tedro, one had, um, fates to see if, and, and there were some options that were presented, um, rather than removing the dam.
I talked to trustee Tedro this morning, there's another group that came forward. They're having a meeting tonight that is interested in acquiring the dam. And it's a big community foundation with a hundred and fifty million dollar bankroll that is, uh, looking into it. It's people from Brookfield and Hubbard. They have a meeting tonight and they're, are gonna, um, be connected through Mr. Tedro with the owners to talk about the possibility of them taking it over and then raising the funds to fix the dam, rebuild it, and then donate it to the county after it's done. So there's good positive talks on that being done.
Their work, um, would also count as match because it's in-kind match for the, the particular grant that they're looking to. So it sounds, sounds like there's a lot of interest in the community. Hopefully, hopefully the demonstration of, of that, not just local, local government, but the citizens and nonprofits, that that'll be enough to cause them to consider waiting.
At this point, there's an official request to, um, for O D N R to not, to back off on the timeframe of when the dam has to be breached, to give them time to negotiate this, and we hope that they do listen and give the amount of time needed to save the dam. At least that's my, our point of view from what I believe. Bishop Heron.
Good morning, my name is Bishop David Heron. I'm here to thank the commissioners for the wonderful privilege and opportunity to be able to serve and to be in partnership with Trumbull County Health Department. And, uh, we're enthused about what has been approved for us to be a, uh, intricate part of what happens in healthcare, particularly in our community, and I want you to know that I'm eternally grateful and we're anxious to get started. And we will keep you informed on the progress as we proceed to move forward. Thank you again.
Thank you, Bishop. Wish you the best of luck. Yes, ma'am. State your name and where you're from, please.
I come behind big shoes right now. My name's Rita Tate, I'm with Best Purpose Incorporated. We just obtained a building at seven-ten Highland Southwest. It was the old Mac Market. Allow me to explain a little of the business. We help impoverished women coming out of battered women's center, homeless shelters, we help them find emergency housing. And then my husband and I, we help them furnish it so that they can have a start. We have a business in Mahoning County, but there was such a need here that I got from Trumbull County Metropolitan Housing that I brought it here, and so the opportunity knocked. And I just wanted to introduce us to Trumbull County and let you know we're here. Of course, we submitted to you guys, um, a proposal for ARPA funds, if there is ARPA funds. And, but I wanted to introduce ourselves to you because we are here to help the homeless, the impoverished families. And we've been open for over a year in Mahoning County. Here, our soft launch was September, uh, first, and we've helped house fifty-seven families. Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Morning. Kay Anderson, Warren Township trustee. Uh, I brought some information, uh, for, for you, every all of you to look over. And first off, I want to thank you along with the other two trustees for the meeting that we had a week ago with the MetroParks Board for putting it together. And, um, her also for agreeing to give the money that, uh, we need for the other study. So I want to present you with. Th- this is, uh, reporting on, uh, another area, New Philadelphia, which is only maybe sixty miles away from here. And what happened when they took the dam out and, uh, how it affected the roads. And I know that, uh, that issue has been brought up here several times, that there's a concern for the roads, so this is much more information about what happened in another community and them trying to dig themselves out, which took almost two years and a lot of tax dollars. So it's pretty self-explanatory, and I, we still would like to work with MetroParks, don't know where we're going with that. But, uh, again, I thank you for that and just wanted you to be aware of this information.
Thank you.
Share this with the MetroParks?
Pardon?
Could you share this with the MetroParks Board?
No. Why?
I, I, I just think it's unfortunate, though, in government that we, that certain boards and certain agencies, they operate with tunnel vision. They only look at their narrow purpose without considering the implications on other things. And, and as a trustee, you, you're seeing all of the negative implications that could adversely affect your community. And I, it's difficult to sit back and watch this board and this agency completely ignore the totality of the circumstances, you know?
Yeah.
So I just wonder, you, it doesn't seem like every, it's very successful when, when we meet with them, but maybe sharing this with them and the, the judge.
I, I haven't attended any more MetroParks meetings, and actually, you were there, the one that I attended. So I'm sure you understand why I'm not eager to go back in for that. And, uh, the other two trustees haven't said that they were, wanted to either, so.
Well, we did have a great meeting last week, so we're gonna, we're gonna ride that wave. And if this needs to be forwarded to them, we can absolutely do it from the commissioners, make sure they have a copy of it also, to share information.
Obviously, the engineer is, is aware of the implications, and that's why the study was commissioned, so.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Deb Roth, Warren Township trustee, or not a trustee, but they trust me, uh, anyway. Do you all know who the contractor is for the dam removal that MetroParks is utilizing?
I do not.
Well, if you read this article, you'll see that the contractor in this article that the road's collapsed on is River Reach Construction.
Barely focused.
The implications of this are much more serious, in my opinion, than they are alluding to. I know that the statement was made by one of them that if the road collapses, that's the county's problem. Let me point some things out, if the road collapses, if they move forward with this project, and I'm really glad that you guys are doing this study because I think it's crucial. But the roads that are subject to hap, that happening is North Levitt as well as West Market, which closes off that section on this side of Meadowbrook. Our fire department or our police department are gonna be on that side of Market Street. So if both collapses at the same time, they would actually have to go down through Market Street, cross Lover's Lane, back up Hartman Road, come back in Levitt over in that side. The things that are on that side are things like the school. All those residents in Meadowbrook, if they have an emergency, or even to get to the other side of the township, it now delays that process. It's also gonna severely impact school busing. Um, because most, most of the stops through there are picked up on North Levitt. They don't go back into Meadowbrook because it's a smaller area, you don't take a big school bus back there if you don't have to. So in the event that those roads would collapse and it took years for them to fix this, we, we are majorly impeding our safety services as well as our school. Um, if they have to respond to emergency at the school, we've added time on to their, their time that they're gonna arrive. Um, I don't think that MetroParks has done their due diligence, because if they did, one, they either knew this and didn't tell us, or they didn't know it and they should have. And I know that I sat through the meeting that you guys set up, listening to them cut down D L Z and questioned their credibility. And I researched D L Z, we don't have those issues that, with that company. And I just wanted to make it public that I think it's your, we're very irresponsible for MetroParks, and this is appointed to you for what is transpiring, because this dam removal at this point should not even be considered. Also in this article, it talks about Ohio EPA accepted no financial responsibility for over the millions of dollars that again came out of taxpayer money as well as the companies. But Ohio EPA, again, accepted no financial responsibility, any part of that burden. And again, in case someone doesn't remember the landfill fight, we've walked that path already, and we don't want to do it again. We appreciate the support that you gave us in that meeting. I felt really good when we walked out that you guys are looking at both sides of it. But I also want you to understand what, how we feel, what our shoes feel like with dealing with them. And as far as us taking this to MetroParks, the last time we tried to give them something, they told our trustee to sit down and shut up, and now how, you think we want to go back into that environment? It's non-productive, so there's no point in doing it. So I would encourage you to share this with them, because hopefully they'll be more receptive to it than, from you than from us. Again, thank you for your help in this matter.
They have immunity, you know, so with, they just, um, they just charge forward with that immunity and actually, and feel that they're.
As a commission, they can be sued or sued.
The Parks Board?
Yes.
So they're.
It's in Ohio revised code.
Okay.
And additionally to that, with this level of neglect, they have the potential of being sued personally for the decisions they're making.
So I think it's probably a good idea to forward this to them so that they have previous, explicit previous knowledge that this is a potential problem and remind them of that.
My hope is.
This, we received this officially, and I would ask that we will forward a copy of it over to them. And again, we had a great meeting last Tuesday. We're not gonna turn this thing into bringing that battle up again. We're gonna let the study happen and review the facts. Let's not go negative anymore.
Review the facts, but this is a fact too.
It is a fact.
They already moved forward, though, with their, with their, um, design and engineer.
They are, from what we see the work being done out there, they're still continuing. Every day they go out there, it's another cha-ching on the money thing that someone's gonna ultimately be responsible for when it comes out in the end.
We, we asked them at the last meeting to pause, and anything they could pause, they agreed to. So if there is money being spent, when they walked out of the meeting, they did agree that they would pause on things they could control and pause on.
Proceed has already been issued and they're moving forward already, so if they're.
Commissioner, you weren't at the meeting, we had an agreement, we said that at the end of the agreement
Right.
to all work together on this stuff, and we're not gonna break our agreement here on working together.
Meeting and they said that they were moving.
That was before this meeting we had last Tuesday. The meeting last Tuesday started a new time clock and a new relationship with the, between the three entities. We're gonna keep the peace on the three entities and move forward together. They allowed, they agreed that they would allow the study without resistance. We're doing the study, when the study comes forward, we'll get back together again and then look what facts were brought up from the study. But it, it does no good for us to sit here and continue to criticize the board, criticize EPA, or for them to criticize, and that's the same thing of them, not to criticize us or the trustees until the study's done and then we agree to come back together as community servants and then review the data.
So the thing is, there are some technical.
So please don't break the peace that we have.
There are technical issues as well, and if the notice to proceed has already been issued and they're already working, there's a time clock associated with that. So if they're going to be pausing anything, then the board would have to take action to amend their contract. And I don't know if anyone had talked.
Their board, the board has not met until the end of the month. They're meeting at the end of the month, I'm sure they're gonna address it. But since our meeting, they have not met.
When's our next meeting, then?
I think it's the last Wednesday or Thursday of the month.
Last Thursday.
Then I would, then I would recommend that, since you have such a great working relationship with these people now, that the president go, just to remind them whenever they have that meeting that, uh, of what they said and to make sure that they have it on the agenda to actually amend, uh, their agreement with the time to, to create pause for.
And I'm glad, I already planned on that.
I just like, we're, we're farther along than we've ever been on this, and we actually have them coming to the table. Um, these are all positive things. They even, e- even in a gentleman's agreement when we were talking to the board.
Count and real estate and government.
And I just finished my thought here.
Yes.
So we were talking at the table openly in a public meeting, and they agreed to take it back to their contractor and see what they can do. Uh, that's, that's farther along than we've ever been with them, so, um, let's sit tight, I think we're cautiously optimistic. Um, but, but, um, I think that this alternative study, uh, when the EPA says you must remove the dam, you know, and, if you have a study that, that shows alternatives to that, I think it would be hard pressed for the EPA to move forward legally to say you must remove this dam if you have other alternatives to keeping the dam, in other words. So I think, um, so I think, uh, we're farther along than we've been. Let's put it that way.
EPA told them they must remove the dam? That is not true. They made the grant available to them if they wanted to remove, there's nothing legally binding making them take it out.
Right. No, 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 I.
They're required.
Right. But, but what I'm saying is the EPA has made a concerted effort throughout the country and throughout, you know, here, here's in the state as well, of removing a lot of these dams for free and flowing water in the, in the, in the waterways. But, and we get all that, but there are different circumstances, as you mentioned, um, in the meeting and others, uh, and different implications and dig, different negative implications in removing that dam that, that I don't think anybody is aware of. And I think this study, once it's brought out, will highlight those things, and everybody will start scratching their heads a little bit.
The representative elect can work on that, because the EPA does have a, a a desire, it's like their mission to remove every dam without con- uh, consideration of the impact on the communities and on infrastructure and on property values and on, they're, they're, they're looking at things very narrowly and hopefully that, that's, that is a problem at the state.
See, we don't hold a lot of stock with Ohio EPA because they put us in the position with the landfill. And Ohio EPA had their blessing on this article, on this, on this dam as well. And then when it all went bad, they stepped back and it's not, it's not our problem anymore. Uh, just like MetroParks is saying, it's not our problem, it's the county's problem, which is gonna come back to your laps and, and ours as well.
If I were there, I would be looking at the, um, at the application process. When the grant application comes in, I think that there should be some category where they address the, those types of things, like.
There's obviously no requirement of financial responsibility because it wouldn't have happened here. We don't want to be second in line, so, thank you.
It seems like it's missing something to, at the state level where they're approving applications, uh, without consideration of that gap, of the impact on the communities.
Bill Danso from the prosecutor's office, um, I know you guys were discussing Colberg Lake, and I wanted to bring that up and, and kind of fill you guys in a little bit. There was a meeting yesterday, it was, unfortunately, none of the commissioners were able to make it, and I understand, uh, they, okay, they, they took attendance and you weren't there when they, so, maybe, maybe, yeah. Okay, and, and that's fine, um, I, you know, I just didn't, they didn't mention any names of commissioners and nobody was speaking, so.
I had to, I had to download the app because it wasn't, it was.
Teams, yeah. So I, I, then I guess you will already know some of this, but, um, you know, I, I think that the one thing that, that the commissioners need to know, and a very rosy picture has been painted of the Colberg Lake Dam. And I, I think that, that that's something that, that people need to understand is that there is really, there's some real risk and some real liability that goes along with this dam. And it's something that, that everybody needs to be aware of. You know, Mr. Tedro even said he wants full transparency as we move forward, and I sympathize with the people that live. And I sympathize with the people that live around Colberg Lake and near the dam. But the first thing, as I've said before, we have to remember is this is privately owned property. This is not publicly owned. You know, it's, it's, in fact, there's folks from Kinsman here today, they lived through this. In fact, on the slideshow yesterday that the ODNR presented, that was one of the examples. That was an issue with a privately owned dam that we were not permitted to spend government money to repair for them. We could fix the roads, we could fix the bridge, but we weren't permitted to do that. The other thing too, just to keep in mind that this is a class one dam that the ODNR has classified it as such that there is serious danger to life and or property if it breaches. They've determined that it's, it's in likely danger of breach. And that's why there's a consent order with the Court of Common Pleas right now for the private owner of the dam to either fix the dam, modify the dam, or breach the dam. And that's, that's what brings everyone here. The thing that, that came up at the meeting yesterday through all of those options is the expense. They're talking in the millions of dollars. Work on dams is very expensive. The consent order from the court says that essentially anyone who becomes involved in this process is, is going to have a share of whatever liability that is and is going to become party, it needs to become party to that consent order. So as the Hubbard Township trustees move forward, as the commissioners move forward, I, I think that it really, and again, I'm not here to talk you out of trying to help people, but I am here to, to sort of fill you in on what happened at this meeting and let you know that this is a very delicate situation. This dam is, is over 100 years old. It's in very poor condition. The, the ODNR pointed out some other similar dams they've had around the state that they've, they've had to have repaired, that they've been able to salvage, and we're talking in the millions of dollars. Not only repairing and replacing the concrete and stone spillways, but the earthen embankments that right now are made up of dirt that's been compromised by trees over the years, been compromised by animals burrowing in, that seeping water according to them now. Other dams of similar size, they've had to actually lower the lake, excavate all that, build new concrete embankments, cover those with dirt. You know, so when we're talking about the, the expenditure of, of funds on this, I, I can't help but think it's going to be massive. There is money available for dam remediation from FEMA. So federal pass-through grant that is a 65, 35% grant essentially that will pay 65 by grant, 35 by local match. The only people that are eligible to apply for that, as they said, are local governments or nonprofits essentially, not private owners. Now, I know there is a nonprofit that's working with, with the landowners potentially, but it's another area where I think the Board of Commissioners need to be very careful in how they get involved in this because a 35% grant of $10 million, $50 million is still a lot of money. Now, I, I know you mentioned that perhaps in-kind services could count. That's unclear at this point. The one thing that is clear is that as far as stacking grants go, as Mr., as trustee Tedro said, federal grants cannot be used to match another federal grant. So there would have to be independent sources. So I, you know, all that to say, again, I, I certainly respect the board for trying to help the citizens out that live around the lake and find if there's a way to do it. But I, I think that from a, from a county financial liability perspective, and if that dam, you know, I, I think the exact words from the, I think it was the ODNR representative leading the meeting was i- if that dam breaches, the least of your concerns will be lawsuits. We're talking washed out roads, homes, you know, a lot of things, and we hope that doesn't happen. That's why the consent order is on to have that dam breached by September. They're looking for a year extension. That's true. The, the one-year extension, if, if trustee Tedro is able to get that, is also going to require additional remediation measures between now and then. So right now, I believe the water level's been lowered by five feet from its top thing. They're probably going to have to lower it even further. They're probably going to have to do additional remediation on plants, trees, embankments, things like that. So that all comes with a cost too, even before we are, are even looking at potentially that year delay on things. It, it's just a very, it's, it's a very delicate situation. And the other thing that I would remind the board too is if the, if the commissioners were ever in a position where they were offered this dam, offered this property, you, you would be taking on some, some additional even insurance issues there because Corso would have to look at that dam and that property for insurance purposes. And these are, you know, all things that were discussed to some degree yesterday about the financial implications and, and things like that. I do have contact information for those folks. If you have specific questions that you want to run past ODNR, I can't remember the lady's name. She's just very helpful. For Cindy Frazini perhaps, but she, she's fantastic, could explain almost any question that anybody had. So I would say if there are questions as it goes forward, you know, and I know you probably have contacts with ODNR too, but, but feel free, reach out to them, talk to them. And, you know, I'm happy to help on the legal end, but just from a, you know, pure meeting perspective of what happened yesterday, that's the short version recap of it right there. They're not opposed to saving the dam. They're not opposed to modifying the dam. It's a question of time and money.
Yeah, they, if they had a, if this process started a year ago, but the trust, Tedro just started and they had bad information, they were told there is not, by the other trustee who is now running for commissioner, that they weren't, that there were no options. And he just now found out that there was an option because they were told, the community there was told that there wasn't. And now it's late in the game, so that's why the extension is needed. Hopefully they'll be able to work with them. I like the fact that the community group, I've met, met the, the man who organizes it. And it, it sounds promising. I was under the understanding though that the in-kind, the in-kind contributions counted for match. Am I, am I wrong?
That's unclear to me. I, I don't know exactly how that works.
Okay.
You know, there, there's perhaps an argument that they could make for, but again, the grant applicant probably wouldn't be, at this point at least, wouldn't be the commissioners. It would be the nonprofit or something like that.
Our study, anything that the owners would do to preserve and that, you know, the Band-Aid kind of matter in between. There, so that property owner, our, our study, those types of things would potentially, and from what I understand, count towards match because it's not federal.
That's a, it's a possibility. I know they were very clear that federal money couldn't be used to stack onto any grant. And, and also that the FEMA money is not guaranteed. There's.
Right.
There's over 100 failing dams in Ohio that need attention. And there's strangely enough, even though they own the printing presses, the federal government has limited resources to spend on dam remediation.
Yeah, there's talks about that in the budget too, moving forward.
Yeah, so again, you know, there's, there's potentially some options out there. And again, I, I'm happy to put you in contact with anybody to give more information to if you need it.
Maybe, is it possible, because I think that the board would appreciate this. The gentleman who is prevent, presenting all the slide information, is it possible to get a copy?
We could try to get a copy of the slideshow essentially just to.
Informative.
It, yeah, I, I thought it was. I mean, I thought it was, I, it's probably nothing that you don't already know, but it's, it's things that just visually kind of explain more as you're looking at it, I think.
Screen recorded, it would be.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I can, I can reach out to them and find out. But that's, that's the update on Colberg Lake, at least from that perspective.
So kind of what you're saying is now the trustees are involved there. There's some implicit liability on them now if they're jumping in the game, getting things delayed if something were to happen.
I'm not sure the trustees are involved either. I, I know that there were two trustees on the call listening. One was more active, one was listening in yesterday. But I don't know if the trustees are involved or if trustee Tedro is just sort of assisting the nonprofit group to help kind of move this forward. That's more of my impression at this point.
So. Profit because he wants to make sure, actually, when he came and presented the situation to the Board of Commissioners, he was here not on behalf, not as a.
And I, I.
But as.
I don't want to speak for the trustees because I haven't spoken to them about my understanding, or my impression at least though, is that as a board, they may have run into a similar concern with the spending of, of township money is probably not easy to do on a private effort. So he's trying to find other ways to sort of help them out. Well, it's.
Thank you for being there.
No, you don't, no problem. And, and like I said, I wanted to report back to you guys and, and just let you know. And again, put you in touch with anybody that could be helpful.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, anybody else have anything for the good of Turnbull County? Audit Reoder, how, I hate to bring it up, but how are the reviews coming as far as the state tax meetings with the people that are challenging their increase their property values? Yes.
I, I didn't come prepared with numbers today, but we have gotten through, I think, our first week of hearings last week. We're continuing to schedule. And I, I feel like we have a really good process in place. And, you know, my pastor has a line that I like to use. I can't make everyone happy. I'm not the ice cream man. So I think I want to hang that on my office. So we can't always make everybody happy, but we're doing our best to follow the law and work towards tax equalization.
And I know, Audit Thomas, that's one of his big issues is to go to Columbus and try to help the landowners out and the homeowners.
Absolutely. That can't be, that really can't be done at this level. We just have to administer the law and that's what we're doing and doing our statutory duty.
And we were bringing up Mr. Thomas's, when you go to Columbus, this increase in property value taxes is one thing we'd like you to tackle on behalf of our residents and see if we can get that more in line, so there isn't such an increase in the future.
Unfortunately, I, I hate to say it, both parties, it seems like they both want it. The, the big debate is how are we going to spend your money, rather than I think the Republicans should be more, how are we going to reduce the budget and save people money? And it's, it's frustrating to so many people are being affected by this and they're getting hit. They're getting hit with their property taxes, with their water and sewer rate increases and their income not keeping up with the inflation that government, government employees are keeping up with inflation because they just keep on spending the tax money, you know? But unfortunately, the regular people in the community are suffering.
Anybody else? Mark, do we have anybody on the phone lines?
Motion to adjourn then.
He checking?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good to go?
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead and announce yourself and who you are and where you're from.
Hello?
Hello, can you hear us?
Darlene?
That didn't sound like her. Okay, she's off. We have a motion in a second.
We got somebody, say something right here.
Yes, sir.
Township president. Township associate.
And like you say, while he's coming up here, it's really nice to look out here and see. We had trustees from at least three townships. We have community leaders from various parts. We have fire chiefs and getting involved in our meetings. We have nonprofits. It, it's great to, union representation to see a meeting so diverse, to have so many interests that are being involved with us. It's an honor to be up there and serve all of you.
I'm Dennis Custer, trustee in Brashville Township. And over the last few months, we have a slippy John Benedict Levesburg. It'd be like north of Swift Park. It's going into the Maoming River. And we got a couple estimates so far. One was $500,000, the other was a million to fix the slippy to Benedict Levesburg into.
Have you been in contact with the county engineer?
Yes, I have. I met yesterday over there again, trying to figure out, this million dollars doesn't make sense to me. So there is, it's pretty expensive to fix the slippages. I think maybe we better off to move the road over.
And that is a county road?
No, the township.
Township road?
Oh, yeah. We've been in contact with the state, trying to see if we get some funds. But just letting you know that it is expensive to fix the slippage. That's all we're on.
Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
You have the school in your community, the school that needed to be demolished, it was overlooked by neighborhood partnerships?
Yeah, there is, yes.
I want to find out how it's going with them. I was an advocate of making sure that that was placed on the list before they voted to spend. For the demolitions, there were like 50 of them in Gerard. And I, and I'm more concerned about the little township because I know that that'll break, break your bank. How, have you been working to move forward to get TNP to?
This started before I became a trustee, so I, I really hadn't been involved with what they were doing.
Okay.
But I will find out.
Through the cracks and I just, I'm, I'm hopeful that you'll work with TNP to make sure that that gets addressed in the future because it's a, it's a hazard. I think the, the fire department had to declare it as a.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I wasn't involved with that, so I mean, I guess I should be, but I wasn't. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Okay, we have a.
Let's just move on. Vote.
Miss French County.
Well, I mean.
We have a yes or more of your vote?
Yes.
Yes, for discussion. If someone called it and they got their call dropped, I think that we should afford them an opportunity to speak. I'd rather.
Okay.
Let whoever it is comment and.
Yeah, we'll give them one try. Are you there on the line?
Try this again.
If you're there, announce yourself and your name.
Did they cut her off? Did you guys cut her off?
Hello?
Hello, can you hear us?
Can you give your name, please? Hello, we can hear you. Can you give your name for the record?
I call my vote.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Thank you all.